One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Kelly, take your phone.
There you go.
Here.
Brad Jay.
Here.
Brandon Tancah. Bryce Howell.
Here.
Scott Stewart.
Here.
Additions and deletions under eight A, I'm gonna do I, and that would, under Town Marshal, uh, surplus items. There any other additions or deletions?
I've had a couple, um, uh, invoice in a quote. The first one would be under seven H. That's invoice, uh, one five two seven from Dunkley Farms and Excavating. And then the other one you can add under, um, let's see, AP five, I guess, for Jason's section. It's a Buckeye Power Sales, it's a work quote. Um, for... It's WQ two zero one four eight two.
Okay. All right, that brings us to, uh, five public hearing, uh, resolution twenty five, twenty five dash six, additional appropriation. Kelly, can you tell me what this one is?
Yes, um, so we've advertised to regional appropriation, again, like we've done in the past, this is not to spend, um, it's three hundred thousand dollars, but it's just to put in there to boost our budget so we'll be able to move sometime rainy day at the end of the year. And with this public hearing, Bryce, you'll have to just, if anyone wants to talk, you'll have to allow them, anyone in the audience has time to talk and then you can close it before you go down this.
Okay. There anybody that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, uh, looking for a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the motion to approve the resolution.
Yep. And does that mean the second reading?
No, that's done, thank you.
All right, then, approval of minutes from the October twenty seventh meeting, looking for a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, claims and transfers.
From the general fund, a hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
From water, a hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-five cents.
Looking for a motion?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
From wastewater, seventy-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Looking for a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
From payroll, seventy-seven thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
Looking for a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Water Solutions Unlimited, invoice number seven two 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 zero two four, and the amount of four thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty cents.
This is just chemical, right?
Yes, this is original.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who made the original motion? Okay, thank you. Water Solutions Unlimited, invoice number seven two four four six eight zero, and the amount of four thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and eight cents.
Same thing, chemicals.
Same thing then, motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Wheeling Brothers, invoice number two six five six, for twenty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
And what, what's this for?
This is sludge room.
Sludge, no, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Kelly, were we in line on that for this here, on both of those?
Yeah, it's that way normally, we've only done it twice.
Then we're gonna go to the addition of H.
Okay, um, Dunkley Farms of Excavating, invoice number one five two seven, and the amount of three thousand, fifty dollars.
Is this in the packet? Or can you tell me what it is?
I'm sorry, this is not in the packet, um...
I can explain.
Yeah.
Okay.
The new convenience store at Bennington Way and Eagle Club Road, uh, where they put the new entrance off of Bennington Way, the water line was too shallow, uh, so, there's one, the water line feeds the Days Inn, and we, our guys did one side of it where we lowered it, so it's a ninety going down, then under the drive, then comes back up to ninety. It's, that's the contractor that was working on the project there, we just had them do one side while we did the other. Uh, we were trying to limit the, limit the time that the days didn't go down.
Okay.
We did, twelve o'clock, we got it done in about an hour and a half, so, we didn't shut, I mean, in a hotel, they kind of need water.
Well, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's why we tried to expedite that.
Okay, looking for a motion?
To move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that brings us to Town Marshal.
Well, come to the end of the year, all our numbers are looking good, um, from what I've seen so far. Uh, we do have a couple things that we're replacing our weapons, which we talked about last month, I wasn't here. Um, I need to get a, um, a vote on surplusing the other weapons so we can, we can start moving them and start getting some revenue in from them. And I've got a few, a couple, a desk piece and...
Cabinet.
A cabinet in there, but somebody just expressed interest in if we can just surplus them, we're getting rid of them anyway, I don't know if we need to surplus them or, or usually we just throw them away, but if somebody wants to come and get them, they can have them.
So, if you guys remember right, we voted on the new weaponry, those are coming in in phases. Adam would like to, as they come in, go ahead, sell the old inventory to get some revenue back as far as the firearms, but the cabinetry and stuff like that, they're, I mean, it's not worth anything.
There's no value in it.
If, if somebody, there's a desk and some cabinets, and if somebody wants them, come get them, if not...
Well, we put in the new storage lockers in there, that eliminated that four, stand-up four van in there, that, that old locker from the schools.
So, just looking for a motion to declare those surplus and, uh, move forward from there.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to you, Mr. Jason.
Uh, the first item is the Oakr Water Grant, just wanted to update you on that, Eric Smith was not gonna be here, so I can update you on this. Um, I did meet with, uh, Dustin, that is an engineer with HWC, that is doing our water grant, so, we were talking about different, I don't think we're, or changes that we're gonna make out of the sewer, well, I'm sorry, at the waste, at, at the water plant, and then also the booster station, where we want along Robert Weest over by the, uh, the school where the mural was on it. So, we're making some changes to that as well, and then we also had communication about where we're gonna be replacing the fire hydrants around town, so, trying to get a final design so that we can go out to bid, we're expecting to take that project out to bid in January, so hopefully it's pretty construction. But most of that work is at the water plant, but this is all part of the Oakr project. Uh, Lever Wastewater Project, we are basically done with the exception of, and this is all in a report that HWC provided, we're done with the exception of purchasing a VAC truck. Uh, I expect to have the three different contractors that are submitting bids to us. HWC is collecting those three and gonna look through them and compare them. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to make a decision on that within a week, uh, so, I'm sure you'll be involved in that as soon as we have the details on that. It looks like there could be even a little bit of money left after that, I don't know how much, I'm, I'm gonna guess maybe fifty thousand, depending on how these prices end up. Where we'd be looking at possibly doing another piece of equipment, and obviously maybe a skid steer or something like that, but this will all be part of that project, so if there's any additional expense, this is all part of the project and the cost savings that we have. We are in need of a skid steer and we're also need a VACO, but VACO's gonna be a little more expensive, I think we could probably pay for, come close to paying for a skid steer out of this project. We'll know as soon as those final numbers come in on the VAC truck, but we feel very confident we're gonna have the funds to do that, but not usually the town. Um, I-70 Water Project, uh, I know we talked about this last meeting, they did just mobilize again. They do have all the cleanup, and it's all reseated on the south side of seventy, along the backside of the truck stop, that's all been cleared up, it's been reseated, there's, uh, straw down. On the north side, they've mobilized, if you've been up there, you've probably seen the pipe laid out heading north, so they're gonna be taking that, um, as far as they can go with that, and put a hydrant on the end, but we're expecting that done probably this week, probably, provided weather, quality, still be able to knock that out, be like whatever. So, that problem, project is still happening. The wastewater line extension, this is the project that we have kind of been partnering with the county on, with regards to potentially taking a wastewater main, uh, from Cloverdale up to the two thirty-one, forty intersection, hopefully connecting to South Public Schools, and then heading west along I, uh, US forty to Putnamville Correctional Facility. Uh, we do have the numbers back, and I forwarded that to you a couple weeks ago. It looks like it's, we, we met, when was this yesterday, was it? Just yesterday with the, two of the commissioners, Kristen, Clary, um, and our, and the engineers with regards to this, and we've come to the agreement, although this isn't set, I mean, you guys have a decision in this as well, but we think it makes the most sense to go along forty and then down two thirty-one, there were a couple of their options that came from Putnamville back through the, the back route. It would require a lot of land acquisition, um, also there are a lot of stone cores through there, too. Um, so, the cheapest route was actually probably the most optimal for us because it would require less land acquisition, but also gives us stability to pick up more customers, there're gonna be a lot more customers along forty and two thirty-one than it is coming across country. So, I think you're raising an agreement with that, and I think you guys will be too. I had emailed that to you, just to take a look at it, if you have any questions, feel free to, to reach out to me. South Putnam seems to be excited about this, uh, Kristen with Putnam County Economic Development is excited about this, we discussed, they just, Putnam County just established the redevelopment commission themselves. All of this area that we're talking about is in there, what will be a, a, what do they call those? It's like a TIF district, but they call it, there's a name for it, do you remember?
Economic Development Area?
Yeah, but they call it something else. Sorry, I'm, anyway, I can't think of what it is right now, uh, but it's in the, basically we'll be in the TIF district, so if Bootsy is getting ready to do a thirty million dollar expansion, money from that, that expansion will go into that TIF district, allocation area, I forgot what you called it, sorry. Uh, it would go into that, so this could potentially help fund this. Now, we're really truly hoping that the state, IFA, the Indiana Finance Authority, will help fund it. That's, that's who helped fund our connection to Lever State Park, they paid for about one and a half million dollars of that project.
Are you planning this year for that?
Probably not, and it's really not necessarily an application process, this isn't like when we go in for Oakr and we do a grant, this is more of a... It is a partnership, but it's where we go to the state and say, hey, you guys have a problem you guys need to address. Putnamville Correctional Facility needs to be on, on a municipal sewer utility, so that you don't have to maintain your own plant. And they're gonna have to agree, yes, that's what we like to do, and set the funds aside. So, this is a, it's a partnership, exactly what you're saying. It's something that they're willing to want where they need, because this is the last correctional facility not on a municipal utility, so, I think it could be a selling point for them, um, similar to what they've been doing with the state parks, they've been doing the same thing with state parks, a lot of them are going, are connecting to municipal sewers or municipal waters, whatever they need. So, there's no guarantee in this, this is the, the thing where we had the county agreed to split the cost of that study with us, so, seven thousand dollars-ish, um, so that's what we got, kind of got the results, it's about seven, non, I'm sorry, construction costs were seven point one million dollars. If you add land acquisition, right-of-way easement access, or, and then also engineering, we're probably looking closer to nine million total project cost. I have no idea how much the, the state would put into this, I have no idea that they'll put any into it, but this is what, we're gonna take the project to them and say, hey, we're willing to help you out, we're willing to help retreat this waste, um, you build the infrastructure to bring it to us. Now, one thing this does not take into consideration is what upgrades we might have to make to our plant, and I have no idea where we stand on that. You know, we're, we don't even know what the capacities are for Putnamville Correctional Facility yet, so, we really, we know what South Putnam is sending, would be sending to us, and it's not a, it's not a huge amount, um, but I'm guessing Putnamville's gonna be pretty substantial, so, I'm sure that would have a big impact on our, on our plant, so...
Is there any water up through there, through forty, south of forty?
No, not south, but they do run along forty, um, you've got reels of water that runs along forty, and then actually, south forty-three water comes down and supplies water to South Putnam High School. So, and actually, that, that came up in conversation, oh, the South Putnam Superintendent and their, their maintenance, uh, manager was at this meeting as well, so, they were involved in that conversation. They're really anxious, they've got a, a, a plant that's older, and they're gonna need to redo their plant in the very near future, similar to what Putnamville's gonna need to do, and I suspect these numbers are gonna be substantial. So, connecting to us would probably make a lot more economic sense than building, bonding and building a new plant on their site, and have to maintain it over the years and have to pay a wastewater operator. A lot of things happening, this is not something that's probably gonna happen this year, or next year, or the year after, maybe, I'm gonna say we're two, three years out on something like this. This is a pretty big deal, if we can pull it together, but there are a lot of cool things that, you know, the fact that the county just did this redevelopment commission, so that's gonna be a, one way of financing this, 'cause I'm sure we're gonna have to finance some of it, now, most of this, I think, should be incurred by the school corporation, the state, or the redevelopment commission, 'cause almost all of this is outside the town of Cloverdale, so the burden shouldn't necessarily be on the town of Cloverdale.
Bringing up a good story.
So, we're picking up a really, really good store customer. You know, this is a, a long process, we're, we can keep it on the agenda every month if you want to, but I'm guessing this is something that's just gonna, it's just gonna take us a long time. I mean, you've seen how some of these other projects take us a year, year and a half, two years to, to finally come to fruition, this is one that's gonna probably take longer, but this could be really, really good for not just, for, for Cloverdale, but good for, if you live in the South Putnam School District, if you live in Putnam County, this could be just really good, you know, for all of us.
I'd say we just trust you to keep doing your due diligence until it comes to fruition, and we don't have to talk about it every month.
Yeah, it's, it's probably something we don't need to talk about, but it's, it's just...
I know, it's a huge thing, yeah.
It's, it's happening, so, um, and this is with AEGIS, uh, this is not HWC, this was AEGIS Engineering, that is, looking at this project, they're, they're going to, after our meeting yesterday, they're going to have, um, conversations with IFA, the Indiana Fire Institute, so, and that's how we're gonna start to get the ball rolling, but this is a pretty big project. I think we've got, the commissioners seem very interested, Economic Development's interested, South Putnam's interested, if we can get the state interested, and I think they will be, I think we can make this project happen, so, just wanted to let you know where we stood on that.
And number five, the Buckeye Power Sales.
Oh.
This is, I apologize, this is not in your packets either, this was a last-minute thing.
Yeah, sorry, Kelly, did you see, I emailed them?
I did, I still have a question about that, but...
Okay, um, this is, if you remember, we, probably two years ago, we signed an agreement with Buckeye Power to inspect our generators, um, obviously we had a catastrophe, uh, four years ago, we had a catastrophe. Uh, we signed an agreement with them to do a service agreement, um, they come out and inspect periodically, and it seems like every time they come out, they come out with something else that needs to be done. I don't know that there's any way I can verify that what they're saying is really, neutrally needs to be done, I just have to assume that they're, but it seems like they're pretty happy every time. So, I did give you a quote, this is on the water plant, the, the generator at the water plant, and the quote to make the repairs, which I can pass this around feedback, is three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Now, the other thing that, and Kelly had, I think, were questioning, um, I, I kind of quickly compared the hourly rate and the mileage, and that's what it looks like is in the, in the contract. Was that what you were asking about?
That's what I was questioning to make sure that that rate was the one within the contract.
Okay, I, I believe that it is, I looked at it, just, this all just happened this afternoon when I looked this up, so, um, I believe this is correct.
What do they change wrong? Curious.
Now, this is on the water, this is not the wastewater, what we've had before have been primarily the, the wastewater generator. And, and I'm guessing probably this stuff hasn't been done here, I know when we served, did the service contract, probably two years ago, I'm sure we probably hadn't done anything to these for years.
It's basically just a service, I mean, a hose.
It just seems pretty salty to me, but...
Yeah, it's lovely. Air filters, freight, uh, coolant.
But if you did decide to do that, I would, I'll confirm with Kelly that it does match what the rates are under our service contract, before we would sign this.
So, on those are going to pay some more? Filters and such?
And labor.
And labor. I mean, a charge.
Yeah, it, the contract that we signed with them reduced the hourly rate and supposedly reduced the mileage.
So, they charged them eight hundred and fifty-two dollars in labor to replace one hose, a clamp hose, and then just service a generator. If that's the case, I need to start using these guys to do my work. I, I, I'm of the opinion we get another quote. You, I mean, you guys, you guys tell me, but that's...
We have a service agreement with them, I guess that doesn't mean we have to use them, but...
Yeah, I mean, you guys tell me, but that, to service a generator and replace a hose and a clamp, and then just regular service, twenty-three hundred dollars seems ridiculous to me.
You're also paying for the equipment, but... Well, it's thirty-nine hundred.
But this is also a generator that they're maintaining for us.
As part of the service contract, right?
Yeah. And then now they're wanting to charge us twenty-three hundred dollars to maintain the generator. They're supposed to be maintained. These things don't get that much runtime, and it should cost us a kind of...
It should run in a month.
Yeah, it's minimal runtime. With our service agreement, if, so say someone else touches that generator, is the agreement null and void? Most likely.
It don't, well, they're, they're not providing warranty, they're providing...
The ser, oh, well, that's, but the service to do that much on something they're supposed to be maintaining, to me seems...
But they're not, the contract doesn't do the labor or anything.
No, I know the labor.
It gives us a reduced cost when they do something.
Yeah, the labor's the, the biggest cost there.
Why don't we just take, well, we table this and have them all, if they have also generated cost, try to make sure it's for what we stake.
I'm just, when was their last visit on that generator?
Uh, I'd, I'd go back.
You know, that's, I'd, I'd like more information as to when they actually had their hands on it, why this wasn't...
Every time they come out to do an inspection, it seems like we get another, but the other thing I'll say with it, I'm sure that, you know, when we did that, so finally signed, signed that service agreement, we hadn't done...
Right, yeah. But they...
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not justified.
But they've been servicing it now for a couple of years.
Yeah, I think they've just kind of been gradually doing each one of these, and each, each year it seems like they're saying, you really need to do this to this one, and who am I to say they're wrong or not?
That's once a year?
Yeah.
I guess, counsel, I'd, I'd say we let, we'll table it till next month's meeting, let Jason do a little more research, make sure that the contract is actually right, and then, um, I don't know, see if there are any more options, but that would be...
I think the risk is low, I mean, I doubt they're gonna have it because now it's more, so I don't care.
That would be, that would be my opinion, so, we, we need motion on that?
Yeah.
Motion to retable it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, where do you treasure?
I have my reports in your packet, and I really don't have anything to add, if anyone has a question.
Okay. Then we go to ordinance twenty-five, the salary ordinance, that is in your packet. Uh, counsel, if there are no questions, looking for a motion?
To move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then this is one that, uh, we could waive the second reading, if I would have a motion to waive that.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to ten, old business, um, I'm gonna let Jason speak on these next couple. Ten A, annexation.
Uh, annexation is the small parcels here in town that we've, we've talked about for about a year, how to do, and, um, I just talked to Mr. Chadly before this meeting, apparently we gotta get a couple of signatures.
Yeah, okay, couple of signatures, there we go.
You guys talked about it a couple months ago, it started in November, so, that's, we'll, we'll try to get that knocked out now.
And then we'll go readdressed.
Uh, I spoke with WTH immediately after last meeting, and they keep telling me they're gonna get back with me, and it seems like they've been putting off, or off, maybe because they've been doing other things, I don't know, but, but I don't wanna take off the agenda because we do need to get that done, so...
CSX with, that's obviously an ongoing process.
Yeah, we still have that grant application in for funding to purchase, um, we're supposed to know in November at some point whether we get the funding, but I have not heard anything yet.
And then the farm ground rental, I talked to Jason about this earlier today, so basically the seven acres the town owns, we've pretty much decided to do that, and actual farm ground is, doesn't make sense for a farmer, doesn't make sense for us, uh, have a much more appropriate is to plant in hay or alfalfa, and, uh, I'll let Jason speak on the farmer's proposal, I think it's a, I think it's a very good proposal for both him and for the town long-term, but I'll let Jason speak on that.
Yeah, I, I talked to, actually a friend of mine, and I should've called Mr. Cummings first, probably, but I, I spoke to a friend of mine that does a lot of hay up in the northern part of the county, just asking what a fair deal is to do something like this, because for transitioning from row crops to, to hay, um, he said obviously there's a lot of input cost in putting hay in, and you're probably not gonna get anything the first year, minimal first year, um, and kind of told me what to expect, but he thought a farmer probably would, would do something like this, if we did it over a multi-year contract, um, they'd be more much receptive to an idea, I then called Chad Cummings, which is who actually rents it now, um, and, and I don't remember if he had beans or corn in it this year, um, and by the way, he, he's gonna be the chef, by the way. Uh, but I asked him if he would be interested in, in it as hay, and he said he would be interested in it as hay. Uh, but he said the same thing, he said, you know, obviously there's input cost, he'd like to see it a, you know, a five or seven-year contract, um, if it's gonna be hay. I would like to see it as hay, at that point, we're not gonna be putting chemicals in, in the ground unless they are wellfields, um, so this way, just keep it in hay, they would not use chemicals at all. So, I'll put something together for you, the good thing is we got a little time, um, we did talk to both of them, both of them said you could see this come spring, uh, you can broadcast it or you can drill it in, heat it on, but Chad, which again, current farmer, said he would be interested in doing that, so...
So, I repotize with that.
Yes, and he knows that we would have to repotize it just like we did, um, you know, hourly farmer want that acreage for hay, so, um, there may be actually more than seven acres, and it looks to me like, and what we've done out there, seven acres is what we used as a tillow, I, I calculated it closer to eleven.
Actual acreage.
Yeah, that we could do for hay.
Okay, gotcha.
So, um, but yeah, I think we've been renting for seven, um, just to, you know, to get corn and beans in, uh, but hay, there's some areas, additional areas that we can use. I think it's probably better for us, and smarter for us to do that, and I don't think the money's that big of a deal, uh, you know, our rent wasn't that much anyway, so this, I think, is just the long-term, and we got a little bit of time to get this done, so, I did talk to both of them today, and I think we can get it to work.
So, that brings us to E, which is the twenty-twenty-six Town Board Appointments. We do have, uh, one appointment for redevelopment commission, that's a one president, one council appointment. We have one for the redevelopment authority board, that's a president appointment, one for the park board, that's a council appointment, and one for the Putnam County Visitors Bureau, that's a council appointment. So, if there's anyone here tonight interested, um, go ahead and let us know, if not, get with Ms. Kelly or Brandon, um, and we can get all those knocked out. So, under new business, uh, go to the Putnam County Humane Society.
It's nothing drastic.
Nothing on the E?
Nothing's gonna blow up, none of that, so...
My name's Kami Easton. Um, I'm actually with Putnam County Animal Care. There are two entities, there's the Humane Society, there's Animal Care, which is, involves our animal patrol officers. We have, over the last year or so, um, done a couple fundraisers to start putting microchip scanners in all the four towns. It's all we're starting with right now, so Baybridge, Rochdale, Green Castle, and Culverdale. So, wanted to come tonight to explain the process, what we have, there is no cost to the town of Culverdale at all. I have all the supplies, I have everything, I just need approval for a location somewhere, here maybe in the town hall, knowing, I don't know what your building is set up like, if there's like a door that's open all the time to the public at all hours, or if there's another building within Culverdale, um, you know, that you guys are charged over, that type of thing, that maybe we could place this device. Um, it is, it's basically just a big, huge.
Can you bring a spy around?
Just a big electrical box. So that's what I'm looking at, size, something that would mount that. And then within side that will be our scanner, which is very small, not much to it at all. All it is. So the purpose of it is, is kind of twofold. Um, obviously, we all know the situation with dogs running loose. Um, the majority of the dogs that are running loose are typically within just a short distance of their home. But people pick them up, we post all of their chatter pages, dog sits somewhere, whatever, I don't know. Um, our thought process is, is it's at nighttime, the evening and the nighttime. You guys always have a marshal or a deputy that's on, you know, through the day, same with each of the towns that are involved. So our thought process is, is this would help evening after hours, somebody finds a dog, they can bring it here, wherever this is located, scan it. There are instructions that will be, um, placed within the box, um, and I kind of made a few copies of these, just to kind of show you what they are. Um, the microchip numbers will be in there as well. But this is kind of the printout that just will be, and it just gives them the steps, just tells them how to do, use the scanner, is basically what it is. There's, um, listed the phone numbers of all the microchip companies, and then I also will have a form, I'll have little bitty business cards with inside, um, that basically give them a place to write the microchip number, and then when they call the microchip company, the owner's name and phone number, there's a little line. And then it has instructions that if they are not able to reach the owner, to contact Putnam County Dispatch. So that, then at that point, a deputy will be dispatched here, or animal patrol, um, will be sent out. So, it is funds that we raised, everything is paid for, again, all I need approval from is just a location. Um, and if it's something that you guys are for, against, whatever, but that's basically what it is.
So counsel, I will, I'll just speak on this, 'cause this literally happened to me three weeks ago. My, my now, I about said to Beyonce I was gonna be in big trouble. My now wife and I picked up a, a dog on middle of two thirty-one, about hit it, close to them, close to hell chatter, and within two minutes, somebody told me whose dog it was, and the, I had the owner's phone number, didn't answer, but drove it to their house, and they took the dog back. And just being where I live and the business that I run, uh, have stray dogs all the time, I think it is a great idea. The biggest thing is where do we put it? Does it, does it have to be enclosed, or can it be like on the outside of a building?
This will be secured, um, there's cables and stuff that will, this obviously be secured to whatever location. You've got some sort of a pole, something like that, that's the purpose of it being enclosed, so it, it can be out in the weather. Um, thought process is, is just keep this in mind, the cable that will run from the reader, um, from the box, the reader and the reader is like five feet. So it'll have to be just down low enough to where somebody's got, if they've got a, you know, a medium sized dog, that cable's long enough to be able to scan that entire dog. Um, so no, but it could be outside, that's not a problem at all. And then our thought, I wanted to throw this in real quick, just so that Adam's kind of aware, um, and you guys as well. It is charged by a USB cable, so what our thought process is, is since most of the towns you guys are on during the day, just check it, check the battery on it, it has a battery indicator light on it. Then your day shift guys, charge it during the day, because during the day is not the problem. You've got plenty of deputies on the road, you guys are on the road, animal patrol's on duty, um, then it's just charging it, put it back in the station, you know, in this unit, once it's fully charged, and that's it. Um, obviously, we've not used one yet, so we don't know how long it will hold a charge, um, from that standpoint, but we were just kind of thinking the day shift, um, could maybe monitor that.
What is the cost for the scanner alone?
So these scanners here were about sixty, sixty-five dollars.
I mean, I'm almost thinking, buy a couple scanners and issue it to the deputies, 'cause they're the ones that handle the dog calls.
Well, I'm trying to figure out is, how many, how many animals in town are actually chipped?
Well, that's.
Well, that, that makes it like next.
You got ten animals chipped, it doesn't.
I think we might have a solution to that.
Yeah, it's not feasible to, uh, to not.
Well, if they, if they're, if they're offering to install it, we make the community aware, and it's no cost to us.
My concern is where do we hang it?
That, and that's what.
That's rules after, the first thing they're gonna do is rip it off the wall and take the scanner home, thinking it's worth something.
Well, and that was the reason why we kind of stayed with a cheaper scanner, um, but it was one that was also a universal, that'll read those fifteen digits, that type of thing. Absolutely, we were gonna run that risk, um.
'Cause I don't know that we really have a facility that's open twenty-four, seven in town that would be, where it'd be secure.
Why couldn't you attach it to the wall or by this door?
You could do that. You can do it by the door and have cameras on it the whole time.
Yeah, I don't think putting it somewhere is a problem, I think. Any liability, so, so if someone picks up a dog, drives it here, in this process, it gets bit.
That's on them.
But they're on, now they're on our property though.
If they get bit on the property, then you'll have to answer that from the attorney's side of it.
Yeah. Not too exact.
And I do that, I, I can talk by the, by the suit, I figure if you're an attorney. Um, now unfortunately, I can't answer that from that standpoint. Um, it's a risk, obviously, anybody takes with any dog, us, we take that risk, you guys take that risk, it is something that happens.
So what's, what's your response to the so few dogs chipped? What's the solution there?
Well, my initial plan, so, we started a microchip clinic at the fairgrounds, um, we've now done it three, three years. Um, we just had one back in August. So my ultimate goal when I started the microchip clinics was to come to each town. I wanted to see my, my response was gonna be, be centralized in Green Castle. Um, I had a meeting with Rochdale Baybridge Town Marshals a couple of weeks ago over this. All they told me was their community wants a microchip clinic, which was my ultimate goal, is to go to each of these towns, the four towns, and hold a microchip clinic. So that becomes my next question to you guys of, I don't have anything in the works. I don't have anything in the works. What our microchip clinic works well, and, and where it's gonna work in Baybridge, and I don't know what kind of buildings you guys have here, or how this is set up. At the fairgrounds, we use the sheet barn, is, is what we use. It works because where it's positioned, they can come in the back, drive straight up in front of the barn, we can do two cars at one time, and then they drive right on out. It's a drive through, they don't get out of their cars, they stay in their cars, we handle the animals. Um, we have, I have plenty of volunteers, take the animal out of the car, my vet techs do the microchips, we put them back in the car, hand them the paperwork, we register all the chips. They don't have to do anything.
What's it called, Steve?
Nothing. It's free.
Wow, Steve, yeah.
And Baybridge has their building is set up to where they could do a drive through.
By no means gonna speak for him, but I think I can. If we do like a one time a month, Carl, the owner Sebar C would be all about this.
Yeah.
I used to run it, so.
Okay.
I, I'm not speaking for him, but I think I can. Uh, I guess what I, here's my recommendation, guys. I think it's something one hundred percent we wanna do, and the amount of dogs just at the car lot or at my house where I'm at, that we've taken and gotten scanned, I think there's a lot more dogs than people think they are that are actually chipped. Can we table this till next month, and what, legal, look at it?
I don't have a lot of concern.
Okay. Uh.
It's self-serve system.
Yeah.
Well, I just, I wanna make sure.
Outside.
Are there handheld options for the officers?
Yes, the sixty dollar.
Didn't say that there was sixty dollars.
Yeah, so we got these off Amazon, um, they've got some, it's like two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars just typically tends to be your highest.
If we would do the clinic, I'd be want, to have one here, so if somebody could have a central unit.
But you guys have one in the field.
If we're gonna do it, I, I'm gonna buy, buy something for every deputy, so they don't have to come here to do it.
And with these, and with, like I said, with these, you have, just look real close at them, 'cause I know some of them will only read like ten digits.
Well, I'll get with you before I.
But yes, um, but like I said, this was about between sixty and sixty-five. Um, I had a lady that was nice enough, we raised the funds, but a lady that was very nice enough to purchase the scanners, um, and then I used the funds to purchase all the cables, the boxes, I've got four, um, of all of those. Um, we've been using one of the scanners at the shelter, is that correct?
Good, California.
Yeah, so our other animal patrol officer, the previous animal patrol officer lost the high dollar scanner. So, when these got donated, our other animal patrol officer's using one of these, and it works.
And you're having good success with it.
Yeah, I've used it on my own dogs to make sure it works good, um, actually discovered one of my dogs is a chip, didn't know that, and we got it from the shelter, it must have got missed. Um, but yeah, they do work. The numbers pop up, most of the chip companies are really good about, you know, you, you just contact them. Now, they may not give the person here the owner's information, but they will contact the owner. So I will tell you something else that you might wanna think about. This is not on us, this would be something for the town. Hey, do you know Baybridge has one, is it Baybridge that has a kennel? They have a kennel, right? Baybridge has a kennel?
Not yet.
Is it Rochdale? Rochdale has a kennel.
I have an inside kennel.
Okay. So Rochdale, Baybridge, Baybridge doesn't have one yet, Rochdale does, but another option you, you guys wanna consider and look into, I know what Baybridge is gonna do, are they gonna put one on the outside, like a cupboard? Any of you have been at the jail, there are outside covered kennels on that, on west side of the jail. That's where if anybody does happen to bring in a dog, they leave it there, animal patrol picks it up the next day.
Who's responsible for the dog while it, it's housed there, though?
Well, and see, I, I, that I don't know. I can't answer.
That was my concern when I said no to that.
If we call you about a dog, what's your response, having to come pick it up out of the kennel? I'm sure, you know, within an hour or two?
Oh, well, we're getting early, yeah.
So, you know, you're not looking at long term care, you're just looking at safety.
Well, the other thing is too, and see, that's the thing too, and that's, that's something to, just to take into consideration, so really, and that's kind of why we've done this. Animal control typically does not come out after hours. Um, obviously, if it's an aggressive dog situation, something like that, that's different. People will get arrested, get arrested, got an aggressive dog in the car, they will come out there, the experts are dealing with those, so they will come out, but typically after hours, dog ran away, stray dog, they don't. That's why you call dispatch, that dispatch can send a deputy down here, um, the deputy will pick the dog up. If the dog's friendly enough, the deputy can put it in their car and take it back to the jail. Um, but I just wanted to let you know, I'm not saying you have to, it's required or anything like that, just something if you guys would wanna consider. I do know some of the other towns are, Rochdale has an indoor dog kennel, I don't know how public access is that, or if they do, or if just the marshal comes and puts them in. Um, I know Baybridge is going to just build just a single shelter cover, um, kennel on the outside of there, really, that's all they're gonna do. Um, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, if it's something, anything you guys would wanna consider, or anything like that, that's also an option. If somebody would bring a dog up here, eleven o'clock at night, whatever, um, don't wanna wait around, put it in there, but then you run the risk of, you know.
Feeding it water and all that.
Feeding water, all that stuff. At the jail, it's different, 'cause we have the inmates that take care of that, they make sure those two kennels have feeding, water in them.
They clean it out?
And they clean them out, yeah.
We got time to answer.
Yeah, there you go.
I, I guess, get promoted. My kid, that, that's all. That's all something, don't start.
I already asked that.
Too soon.
Already asked that question.
That's all something we can, we can talk about as far as that. I think we're all, we're all on board on that, as long as legal.
Yeah, I don't, the kennel thing scares me a little bit, but.
The kennel thing scares me, but I mean, are you, as far as putting a box on the outside?
On the outside with the camera, I'd have no problem with that.
You don't, no, okay. So, um, counsel, what I would ask for then is a motion to approve that. Um, and then Adam, let's talk.
If you're gonna motion to approve that, add in repurchasing three, let's see, one, yeah, three. At least three, let's say four of the handheld ones, so that way I've got a spare if one of them goes down.
Okay, and Kelly, what funds would that come out of?
I don't know, just operating supplies, it's such a little.
Okay, yeah, so I'll just, just make sure, okay, so counsel, I would ask for a motion to approve the box and four additional scanners.
And will I get your opinion on this?
Absolutely.
Motion.
And then what we would just need from you is, we'll just coordinate with you, you can coordinate with Terry, on, once you guys figure out a location, wherever, we can come down here, get it installed.
Yeah.
We're, we're Jason on the best location.
Okay.
It, does it have to be hardwired?
Nope.
Electrically?
Nope.
Can't be hardwired electrically.
So they don't have to worry about?
Well, yeah, for the, I mean, you probably can.
You can just have the charger in the box.
You can have the.
I'm just assuming be charged all the time, these guys aren't gonna.
No, I don't wanna do that every day, I don't.
Well, you can't leave it on the charger all the time, or you'll cook the battery.
Yeah, you'll cook the battery too, that's it.
It's just like your cell phone, it has to run down and then charge back up.
I did not know that.
Yeah.
That'll cook my truck cell phone?
That's why, that's why after the end of two years, the batteries.
Yeah.
I've never heard that.
Yep.
See, we're almost saving some money.
But again, it's, it, I think what we put out there is it's not the town's responsibility. The people, no, are they gonna listen to that? No, they're gonna think you guys are responsible for it, I get that. But I think if it's put out there, the, you know, if they happen to pull up here at eleven o'clock and it's not charged, I'm sorry, it's not charged. I don't want these guys to feel like, but we felt that was the best.
And then again, if they call us, we're gonna, we're gonna be prepared, 'cause we're gonna have the handhelds.
Because you'll have the handhelds too, so.
I mean, I think we're gonna get better reaction with you guys doing the scanning, because a lot of people aren't gonna load a dog up and bring it down to the town and scan it and make a phone call and.
So, the person scans it here, or he scans it, then they have to call the ten different places to see which one?
No, so this Chi Chi, what I'm gonna do, so like, there's always usually three digits at the first of the chip number, so like ninety-two, that's a specific chip company. So they'll, this sheet of paper tells them what those numbers are, so like, home away, so they'll call that eight hundred number and get the information, um, that they found a dog. So typically though, he could probably answer this a little better, I know when the shelter calls, they'll give the information to the shelter. If I just call a regular citizen calls, will they give me the information?
They will not. Uh, there's a privacy clause that they can either elect to have in place or not.
And they will call the owner of the dog.
But the.
They will give it to, they will give it to law enforcement, they won't give it to the owner.
Use the same chip manufacturer for all your shipping events?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So then, back to that with that microchip clinic, if that's something that you guys wanna try and do, that's something that will probably start back up, start becoming available when we start getting into some warmer weather, about April, May, um.
So offline, just get, get with me, I'll get you with Carl.
Okay.
I think that'd be something, but.
Can you maybe take the dog to the unit, so I can now get it chipped free?
We charge at the shelter, ten dollars, ten dollars, so ten, yeah, ten dollars. Yes, anybody can bring their dog up there. Um, we've done these microchip clinics, we've done three, um, we've kind of had some different times that we've done them, I've done August, I've done November, and I've done one in May. Um, this last August was the biggest turnout we've had, and we microchipped sixty-four. Um, the first couple times were in the fifties, but I do think it would be a huge benefit, um, you know, if we have them in the small towns, because a lot of people don't wanna drive twenty minutes, you know, to, to the fairgrounds, whatever, um, so they don't wanna do that. So I do think it would be beneficial in these small towns to have one.
How many of these boxes do you currently have hanging?
We've not hung any yet.
Okay.
Um, we've just started meeting with all the towns, like I said, we just met with Baybridge and Rochdale, so I'm just waiting for them, they've approved it, waiting for them to get back. So I'm just waiting for them. They've approved it. Waiting for them to get back with me with a location. And same with you guys. Once you, you know, we figure out a location.
Yeah, and I think once, once it takes place, if you can give feedback as to how many people are actually utilizing them, if you can get that information.
I wanna try to figure out a way to get that information and I haven't, I was actually thinking of that coming down here. I wanna, I can't quite come up with a way. If there's a way to figure out to do recordings. I'll look into this on this scanner itself.
I think those scanners have memory.
That's what I was gonna say. I think they do have some memory on there, so we might be able to just appear out.
Curious just to see what type of scanner.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think it's just getting that word out there. So my initial plan was is once we get them set up into the towns, I'll just post myself over these chatter pages. Just kinda let them know they're there, you know, kinda give a little rules behind them, those type of things. We can also, I've also debated about having just like a public kinda meeting, information meeting for all of the towns to maybe come into one central location and talk about it, answer questions, those type of things. Demonstrate how it works, those type of things. So, but until I kinda get them set up in the locations, I'm just kinda putting that on the back for the moment.
Adam, how many, just out of curiosity, how many dog calls do you think you guys deal with on an average?
Uh, what'd you think, Terry? Probably three or four a month.
Twenty-five or four.
Yeah, I mean, it fluctuates. Well, it depends on the weather.
Your personal.
Well, that, but I mean, you also, anytime you get on one of the chatter pages, it's a lost dog, it's this one or the other, so.
Well, it looks like you probably get a lot of calls that come in direct to and don't go through dispatch.
Yeah.
So that's, you know.
Well, I think the biggest issue is just not even, you know, some of these people are just on the outskirts of town. I know there's a lady, I won't mention her name, but she's had a dog that showed up in her yard. Cute little black thing. She kept it for a week, never called us to come scan it. But now somebody else is taking care of it and fostering it and just now took it to the vet to have it scanned for a chip. There's no chip. But again, she's just outside of town, so it even just gives, your dog lovers will travel. If they're out in the country, they'll, if they know they got a chip or a arena right here, they'll travel because they love dogs and they wanna get them home.
I think your biggest obstacle with this is just education of the public.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
That's just something we're gonna have to put out on social media and have, or have, you know, educational stuff for them, so.
I would, I would also make a recommendation with these boxes, that you go out and talk to Stardust. And put it at their clubhouse, because there's a lot of dogs up there.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Even if you did.
For the one here.
For the minimal cost to have one there.
Right there.
Yeah, because I mean, there's really not a lot involved. Less than a hundred dollars for an entire.
And, and you could put it on their clubhouse wall and it'd be available right there for them.
That's, that's the man you need to talk to about that right there. Not anymore. Oh, not anymore. Okay, I'm sorry. I missed it.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
All right, no, I think we're all on board, so Council looking for a motion to approve the one here and then four handhelds for our officers.
Make a motion, make it happen.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
At some point, I need Terry to get ahold of me so we can get where I need to buy those from. Probably get a purchase order for them.
We can do that. Do you have his email?
I'll do it then.
Get his email. He can email you all this stuff.
Yeah.
Put the breakdown, I've got a link and everything to the email.
Be a good reason for him to come down and have coffee with us one day.
Yeah, that's exactly what he'll do, I'm sure. And then if I can get your information, Adam, you can give that to Jared or whatever he gives me and I can then email you and coordinate that.
And then I'll be, well, Adam's already got Carl's information. You can just send it over to him.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to B Alley Abandonment and Cindy Holland. So basically, going east and west on the backside of where the American Legion post sits, there is an alley that crosses from the backside of the American Legion property to Lafayette Street. Cindy is asking basically that we declare that abandoned property and for the town to declare abandoned property, that way she could have access to it. It is my opinion, Council, because in speaking with Jason and Brandon, I know he's not here, there are several other alleyways in the town that this could technically be a thing, if you will. It's my opinion, the town does not wanna get into that and because I feel like if we do one, we're going down a slippery slope of where people could ask us to do this with a lot more property. So it's my opinion that we do not go down this road, but I will gladly open it up to, to your guys' thoughts. And it's marked in red there on your, it's marked in red there on your sheet, on the, right there on the east and north, east and west on the backside of the Legion property.
I do a lot of alley vacations in the city of Chicago. Basically, how it works in the city of Chicago, is that you file a petition with the court's office asking for the alley to be vacant. You're responsible for seeing out notices to your adjoining property owners of the request. It gets heard by the city council. At that, the city council asks if they're gonna make objection to it. Probably one out of twenty, someone objects to it. And there's no objection. And as long as the vacating of the alley doesn't create a dead end, they are approved. It's not something that the city does. It's the resident petitions for it to avoid that slippery slope of. Now, the alternative is you could charge a five hundred dollar application fee to cover the cost of these drafty ordinance. And then you could vote on whether or not to, again, advertise, same process, it's just that we would do it.
It has to be an official process.
Yeah. Because you gotta notice, notify the adjoining landlords, because, you know, they could use the alley or who, who knows. But that's why you have to have the notes.
The property actually is split, if there's two.
That's right. Then the, the alley between the adjoining landlords or the ones on each side, you just get half the alley. No one gets all of it. Everybody gets half.
Larry just asked me if there are utilities. In this specific case, we do not have water wastewater. I can't confirm whether there's gas or any, but I do know we don't have water wastewater.
And vacant alley does not terminate easements. So if there's an easement for utilities.
It's there.
It's there and they still can't fill all of it.
Are you aware of any easements?
Well, just by the fact that it's our property, we don't even have any, have any easement. But I would call that implied easement. I assume that's called implied easement because of its existing. I personally wouldn't even recommend abandoning an alley if we do have utilities. In this case, I don't have any definitely. Now, again, I don't know if gas may be under there and I don't know if the devil may be there. Well, electric too, I guess, dude, that one's definitely over there here. So I have not communicated with them, but with regards to our utilities, water wastewater, I don't have concerns. But Bryce is right. We don't can. And we don't necessarily have a process for this, like Mr. Shively suggested. If we want to develop some kind of process for the application process for doing it, or if there's a fee to do it.
There's obviously gonna be legal fees involved and there's, you know, time and effort, so. There should be a fee if we're even gonna consider accepting it to the public.
It might also deter that people have just, it'll, it'll help determine who really wants to vacate the alley.
In this case, I will say, this was last spring probably. The Legion was wanting access from Lafayette Street.
That's been.
But they, we also thought there was an alley from the street just to the north, directly behind cities. That used to show on G I S, but you'll see it's, there's no alley there. I remember they figured that out and they did a survey. There is no alley there. So with that, with communications with the Legion, they no longer want access. They realize it's not feasible just because of the geography there. And if you wanna know the truth, I think there, one garage may be actually sitting on this alley too.
Which is a common practice.
Yeah.
Especially on alleys where they may be platted but not ever used. See them just slowly encroach.
But I know that she reached out to Raymond and that's, he wanted, I thought she was gonna be here tonight.
Me too. I thought she'd be here. It's, it's my, it's my opinion, we don't go down that slope. It's, I guess, Council just looking for a motion on your guys' opinion.
I think it's three choices. One, we just say no at this point. Two, we set up, we table this and set up some procedures for them to apply for. Or three, we add, we do the, you know, just the application requests of, and then we prepare the ordinance and we do it.
I say two, I think we should set up some procedures. That only makes it fair for other townspeople who might have the same or similar situation.
I think we table it for now. The answer's no. And then we'll consider or we'll work on a procedure and cost associated with moving forward for the future.
Yeah. Is that in your motion?
That's my motion.
One second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that brings us to printer quotes.
Our printer contract is expired. They're no longer making requests for it. This includes both the towns and the police departments. We've asked for two printer quotes. Adam's been involved in covering. We've actually asked for smaller printers than what we have now. We're working on going paperless. It's encouraged by the SBOA. We also received, in with that, you get a cheaper service agreement, cheaper per copy. And also, they've agreed to fix the price on the service agreement for the next five years, which is not typical. Typically, they raise the price every year and they've agreed to fix that. The quote is in your packets. It's two different quotes. The first one has the price of both printers on there. So it's, I think each printer is four thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars. And then it's got the service agreement, which is per copy. And again, that is cheaper than what we're paying right now.
Council, just in my business, these are very, very good pricing on these. It would be my recommendation that we approve both of these quotes because it is cheaper than what we're paying now and we all know we don't, it'd be anything cheaper than we used to. So would be looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that brings us to B S and A Cloud Software.
Our utility software that we're using is from nineteen eighty-nine. I also.
I'm bored.
Does it come on a little fluffy drive?
It's close. I recently learned that it's also on a database that is no longer supported by Microsoft, which makes us vulnerable. The S and A, which is the software company that has bought our Keystone, which is what we're using currently, they've offered us an early adopter's discount to go to their cloud-based software. In doing that, it would eliminate our current credit card machine company and our invoice cloud, which is our online bill pay right now. That would all, all of that would be integrated in the new software. The customer bill pay, let's see. Yeah, the customers' bill payment options are very comparable to what they have now with one exception, and this is a really good thing. There is an option to sign up for auto pay using ACH completely free. Yeah, no fees for the customer and not only is it free, they can enroll without creating an online account, which is huge. That's a great benefit to our elderly population who is wanting this auto pay, but they can't get it because they don't have the email address. The quote, and Tammy, our utility clerk is here. She's here in support of this. And if you have any questions in how she deals with the public and things that they're concerned about, feel free to ask her that. The quote is in your packet. And I'm telling you, that quote is divided into three sections. The first section is the new annual fee, and that's about twenty-two thousand plus a seventeen hundred dollar online bill pay part. And we would not pay that if you all agree to this contract until July or August next year is when we would go live with this. And that part would not be paid till then. The second part is a migration fee, and that is thirty-four thousand dollars. That's the part that they took off. They waived that fee as an early adopter's discount. So we're getting thirty-four thousand dollars taken off the price of this. The third part is a training cost, and that's a bill per day. The total, their total estimate on that would be about twenty-three thousand dollars, but it could be cheaper. It just depends how much training we end up doing, meeting with this.
Now, we're all three of you, I'm guessing, there.
Absolutely. Yes. Yep. And that training part would not be paid until all the training is complete. So when all of that's done, and they would bill us for how much we used, and we would pay that. We're gonna have to do something just because of the age of the software and vulnerability that we have. And financially, this is the best time since they're knocking off thirty-four thousand dollars. We're never gonna see this kind of pricing again.
What's our, just for me, what's our annual price that we're paying now for what we are using?
Currently, we're paying twelve thousand dollars a year plus an additional twelve hundred, twelve hundred a year for invoice cloud.
But it's not, it's not backed by Microsoft anymore.
No, no.
And it's two years older than me.
Who's doing the updates for cybersecurity issues and?
For the new company?
For the old, the one we're using now.
That's what she said.
I don't know.
There isn't any. There is, no.
Yeah, I don't know.
We, the Council approved the purchase of an updated software a year ago, maybe a little over a year ago. That's about the time, we'd already signed the contract to switch over to the new Keystone project. And that's when this, this new company purchased Keystone. So that kinda threw everything in limbo, so we're coming back again a year. Now, the pricing is a little bit different and definitely the software is a lot different than what we.
I will tell you, I found, I found one of my notes from last year and Keystone was still in the process of developing this and it was gonna take about five years. In the five years when they had it all developed, our cost was gonna be about thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Now, they've already got the whole shebang and they're only gonna charge us twenty-two thousand. And this is actually exceeds what Keystone was working on.
I think it's a no-brainer.
Well, I mean, for somebody that literally just had his identity stolen and has spent twenty grand in attorney fees and this old software we're using is literally two years older than I, than I am, I don't see how we can. She'd be a good person to ask. Tammy?
I'm for it. I think we'd be, I think we'd be reckless if we didn't.
I mean, I'm, I'm literally going on six months from the, close to six months, this guy's still, stealing my identity and still working through it. So I am looking for a motion.
Motion would move forward as quick as possible.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, at this point, I'll open it up for any citizen comments. All right, this meeting is finished.
Citizens are boring, man.